Hey Tom. I'm gonna still be like fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay. Do you wanna just uh clap on and just turn the volume down or can we call back in a minute?
Can you call me back in fifteen? I got my phone, I grabbed it, it sounds like they're not still in the meeting.
No problem, I'll call back in fifteen.
Okay, bye.
Alright, thanks, bye.
Alright, we're gonna call the uh, we're gonna call the uh, eight twenty thirty meeting to order.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, just a reminder that, just a reminder that all meetings need to be recorded. Uh, and ask for this policy members zero zero eight. Board members, remind only officers that you should sit this day on to say that you're safe from the and the reason for doing so prior to the meeting. Alright, can I get a, maybe a bowl of water?
Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Mrs. Beckman?
Present.
Mr. Gresh?
Present.
Mr. Jared?
Present.
Mrs. Markle?
Present.
Mr. Scott? Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
And Mrs. Alzner? They're here, one, all of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Alzner. Alright, let's do a few quick questions.
Alright, good evening everybody. We are very excited to do some staff recognition recognition this evening. We're actually going to start with an Eagle Scout recognition, Mr. Spohles, if you'd stand on.
Uh, the Eagle Scout recognition is culmination of a lot of hard work and student effort over the course of many years. Uh, tonight, uh, we get to recognize one of our Blazers for achieving that accomplishment at less than one percent of the combination that gets to sit there and pay the whole. Tonight's senior, Tavish Whitaker.
Tavish, congratulations.
Thank you.
You wanna say anything about, um, your, your part of the project?
Alright, so for my project, I built picnic tables that are currently down by the football field near the concession stand. There was enough for them. Um, and I had the help of many friends, so it wasn't just me in that effort. I had, um, a lot of help along the way, so it's amazing just to be able to sit here in front of you guys reflect on how hard work that went into that, so. Thank you.
Great job. Alright, oh next we're gonna transition into staff recognition. Uh, this part is extremely bittersweet. Um, there's some people I just don't even wanna look at it because I can make it sick in my stomach imagining them not here. It's, uh, quite exciting, but I'm so happy for them. Uh, you know, I'm happy, right, I have to keep reminding myself, I'm happy for you guys. Um, let's, let's actually start with, uh, Mrs. Myers. Uh, so to present this, let's start with her.
Alright, first, I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to share some thoughts about two of our most well-respected teachers at the primary center. First, I would like to honor Mrs. Vivy Myers. I've had the pleasure of working with Mrs. Myers for the last twenty years and I'm sure there's fond memories of after tenure at Dinkley. Mrs. Myers has literally taught hundreds of kindergarten students how to be good citizens in their school environment and beyond. Each day, her students say their school pledge along with the emotions and in practice what it's like to respect each other and to always be good friends. When you see her in action, it's easy to see why she is one of the most prospective and most requested kindergarten teachers at Dinkley. I'm going to miss her tremendously because she's my right-hand woman. Um, during each assembly, she would often take the mic. Not many teachers would do that. And she would add other details she felt were to be added for our kindergarten students to understand more clearly the important information we were sharing. To be honest, sometimes I think she ran the whole program and she did so very successfully. Mrs. Myers worked with her students and families with such grace, helping them understand everything without kindergarten and she guided each of them every step of the way. She cared for her students just like her own and held high expectations for each one of them. I also wanna mention, she was the teacher that saved all the years every night. Not sure she was sitting close to them, yes, I know, I know. She was busy all day ensuring her students had everything they needed to be successful and she definitely put in the time. The memories of Mrs. Myers growing climate of the Dallas kindergarten center, Bird'sboro Elementary Center, and the primary center will continue on as she has shared the legacy with her students, her colleagues, and her families that will leave her forever. To one of our most favorite kindergarten teachers, who she only gave that very message of the promise of the time. Clearly, I do take your microphone. These are big people, so I'm just gonna say, uh, thank you very much. I've really enjoyed my time here, it's been a privilege, a blessing, that's it, thank you.
It's a great honor that I now share fond memories of our English language development teacher, Mrs. Barbara Sanchez. I've had the pleasure of working with Barb at least the last four years. Barb taught multiple grades at the primary level before becoming our English, becoming our English language development teacher. This position provided for the opportunity to teach English to our learners from various grade levels across the school district. Barb is one of the most kind, caring, and nurturing teachers I've ever worked with. She is someone that I despise at homework, who goes above and beyond to help anyone in the evening. Whenever we gave someone to help with registration of families who didn't speak English, Barb went out of her ways to help them. She's known for supporting her families in each and every way they need, including securing other supports where necessary to help our students meet success in and out of the classroom environment. This is what people remember best about Barb, her kind, caring, and compassionate nature and helped her put our Dinkley families first. She will truly be missed, Barb wishes her the very best and she will always be so proud of her family, thank you.
I'll just say a couple of words. Um, I've really enjoyed working with many international students that I've met along the way and the teachers and all of that and the administrators and the brick in the buildings and people asking, so, excited? I said, yes, I'm excited, I'm also sad and I'm also nervous, so I'm looking forward to the last few days for spending with the kids and, um, with Mrs. Bartlett.
Thank you, thank you. Up next, Mr. Powers, and I'll introduce you if you'd like to. Say your name, Mark, Steve, Chris.
Well, before I start with mine, I do wanna add on to Mrs. Sanchez. Um, she's been a part of our building as well. She will be missing and I don't know about a lot of people, especially outside of education, sometimes you do ESL has the tendency to think that it's mostly Spanish for students that are coming in and maybe it's a not loss of, but in the last two years alone in the middle school, Mrs. Sanchez has dealt not only with Spanish, but Vietnamese and Haitian Creole. So two very wide, or actually, I don't wanna talk about them, but two very wide-ranging ESL students that she did with phenomenal grace. So that is something that I just want to add. Uh, I have the pleasure of first introducing Mrs. Boyle. Um, my mom taught me a long time ago, it's never a bad idea to include anything that might be in age. So I'm gonna stay away from doing that, but as we're sitting here presenting, it's kind of nice realizing that as I get closer to a milestone age, I'm all of a sudden thinking, oh, this is another dude. Uh, Mrs. Boyle, I, in order to do the math, I can tell you how many years she's taught how many kids. We're talking to thousands of students that Mrs. Boyle has impacted that have come through, uh, Dinkley Middle School and if I was lucky enough to grow up in East of Florida State, I'd make or remain out of that, but I'm a teacher, another little kid there. Um, as educators, one of the things that we talked about, I don't know just the relationship with the kids and education with the kids, but as educators, one of the things that has been recently talked about a lot is PIBOS. That's sort of a fancy term for opportunities. And everybody wants to be in the blue. Green means the kids are doing exactly what they're doing. Blue means they don't mother the lawn and dark blue means that they are setting the road fine. Mrs. Boyle consistently is so blue, she's almost been holding. And that is going to be something that is going to soar leaders, the personalized fact and the educationalized fact. And talk about full circle, we actually today had the first day of interviews to replace Mrs. Boyle. We interviewed two people today, have multiple interviews to discuss the lead. And as we need to brief you around the table, the first thing we talked about is how difficult it is going to be to replace her. So congratulations, Mrs. Boyle, thank you for all you've done.
Just wanna take the opportunity to say, um, thank you all, thank you very much. Um, we've been in my family for close to thirty years, I'm not being a family. Um, I've been lucky enough to teach with mostly the same people and, um, and it's been a joy. Um, administration has come and gone, all of that white-haired guy saying, you can't watch that. And, um, Mrs. Myers, you talked about full circle. Um, we hired Tom in sixth grade and, um, I won't tell you the words that he not had in our mind, he said, he was eating, going to the dark side of administration. Um, but, um, I just wanted to say to the board, you are lucky. He thinks all the time about students and makes the right decisions, always made it in the sixth grade, that's the guy too. So, um, I'm not a very good in the beginning, but I know his heart is good. Um, and also just to call the audience, you're a taxpayer. Um, I know it's tough and I know there's many tough decisions when it comes to money. Um, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a teacher, you deserve to get paid, I'm about to become a retiree. And so those of you that have, uh, fights with budgets and taxes, I urge you to take care of your skirt and have you sort of, um, thank you for my time and I'm going to retire.
Mrs. Boyle, you're happy to know this, the number is thirty years, you did not have any of those. Uh, I think our final retiree, Mrs. Joanna Wilson, in the back there. Um, I've only been with Dinkley Room for about five years and when I came on board, Mrs. Wilson has been working with our gifted students in the time that I've been here. And a lot of times, working with our students that have identified as gifted is sometimes one of the most challenging things we have to do. Because to challenge the students who know everything is very difficult to do. And, uh, Joanna has done that with beauty, grace, through everything she has done. How we've gone about teaching our gifted has changed, probably three times for the last three years. Uh, Joanna has taken it on and just never missed a beat with anything she has done and it has been fantastic. I will remember most fondly some of the mock trials that she does every year with the kids. I think the first year I went down, we had a state representative or a local parent who was a lawyer, dressed tall in the garden. It was wonderful getting out in the community. The next year I went down, Mrs. Joanna's sitting at the table in, in doing the act. But the kids had a wonderful experience doing it, there was some great conversation, great discussion. And speaking about the conversation and discussion, in this transition, I had an opportunity to sit down with Joanna, about a week ago. And I just simply wanted to sit down and paint her brain about some of the stuff that she was doing in order to talk to her replacement about those things. We ended up having such a rich discussion about so much in education. And it made me wonder as she was leaving, as I was leaving her, or her room at the time, do you really have to retire? And I, I think at that point in time was when I may have thought I'm gonna come back in summer, so we'll see if that's successful. But without further ado, Joanna, thank you so much for everything you've done.
I actually came here. Thank you so much. Um, I, I came here tonight and thank you for this recognition, but I am really here to express my gratitude. Um, thank you to my students, past and present, to the parents, to my mates and colleagues, administrators, and school board members, past and present. Um, every time I came to this podium and asked for something, I'll have my students give to me, every time. Um, the support is, is overwhelming, um, at all levels, so. I am resigning in a few days until Tom, I told my students, it's one of the hardest decisions you all made, it's so difficult. Because I love my job, I love my job. However, I am resigning the way that I think all of us want to resign. With feelings, um, I'm fulfilled, I'm gratified, and I feel respected. Um, it's, it's just been great, that's been great. Um, please continue to support and advocate our gifted student population, um, as you do for all our students. Thank you so much.
So just to tie this together, um, you know, it's, it's not a game free, but that people will just come up to me and say, well, what would you say to doing so special? What's special about being a blue? And every time, it happens, it's the exact same, we have a community that cares. Uh, we have teachers that care people every single day and we have amazing students. The community that we have here is just wonderful and I am so blessed to be able to sit this evening, to be able to support that work. So again, so many wonderful things, our retirees, I'm so, so set to see you go, but I'm so happy for you. We hope you enjoy the next year, thank you.
Alright, that was very touching, you were so encouraging for the higher reason for it, yeah. Um, moving down to, uh, next I want to, uh, just to, uh, head this to the panel. And we see the public participation. Fair statements so correctly worshiped, have a copy sent to the board president, party being addressed. Comments on ten letters being made by proxy and version of my friend, stated here being addressed, this is what you provided. You will be granted the three minutes to address the word, if three minutes, I'm a little sorry, you can speak. If three minutes are over, you will be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda as well as the agenda I had upon. Comments to make, investigate section, if you may, on the agenda. Are there any presentations by public on any agenda items? Rich, I'll forget our seat, cause including Kristen.
Why, I have no speech. I have, I have three quick questions about the contract. One, the UBA, UBDA always says it's all about the kids, so I'm curious to our negotiations, what they negotiated for the kids. Two, negotiations are two-way streets, so I'm curious what work, working concessions we got. And three, I'd like to know the total cost of the contract, including salary benefits each year for the life of the contract. Three quick questions.
I said that public comment is to keep, uh, round fire is answer question, so if you don't want to comment, but you're starting to ready for, so.
So, so I just wanna be clear that I'm not doing that, so, so just.
Right. This, this question, I was, uh, we had, or was approved, uh, so we still have, it's still something I'm just, uh, 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 your, um, I, I think that every course maybe to, uh, identify the issues at every point, uh, and some of the discussions, uh, to assess, uh, so.
Can you, can you give a, yeah, can you give a higher over the, uh?
Sure, sure.
Alright, so the first question was related to what the students said, um, what the students said, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, what the students said is to get quality staff that's not gonna be a problem at all. Um, we get students that are passionate about what it is that they're doing. By the February, that is within the collection of the district. Um, I believe this process was as strict and as collaborative as the process that I've been. Um, we have partnered with, uh, Mr. Joseph Mann, who is, you know, statewide for his negotiations. Um, said, I believe anytime you end negotiations with, uh, oh, we get everything we wanted, they get everything they wanted, then that lets you go pretty much in that middle area where negotiations could end. Um, the teachers were able to receive, um, they helped to raise all at the same time, making concessions on one of the biggest things being, um, our retirement center that was going through the contract, that was a $200,000 line item that they understand the district's financial situation. Um, negotiated out of the contract, which is something that is, um, tricky on, on their end with, with the union. So I give, I give them credit for recognizing the challenging situation that we were in. Um, beyond that, I mean, it's pretty, pretty, um, retractable, but I mean, from a high level, they're getting paid up, but they gave up a pretty good, uh, concession in, uh, retirement center. Those are the biggest things of the contract that I'd say.
Does, does the? So I don't, I don't think answering this question too far ahead, so if, does the contract at some point become, reworked by the, uh?
Yeah, the contract was approved, it was about the document, it was about, you know, I'm, we see a lot of, uh, I think, I know this was also.
Right. And, and the reason I was a little hesitant first, I hadn't, I was not completely sure whether or not the UBDA had quite, like, I'm, maybe, yeah.
As of four o'clock, give or take, uh, it was right in front of me.
Okay. So then, I, I followed that, I wasn't, I was unaware, I saw it as a shirt, I was, uh, to be, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh. But I think one of the big savings of that was the $200,000 retirement clause, or the, I'm sorry, the retiring clause of the teacher data that translates or to one of the case studies over here, like, where I have, if, uh, something that we really hammered in the negotiation process.
But if I may, I don't realize we could read the contract, or propose it, and it'll show the percentage increase. But we're not gonna be able to, the public is not gonna be able to take that and determine what the annual cost salary benefits is of it, and that's why I'm asking.
So I guess that's a question that you could give to, I guess, the president, right? Would we be able to break out that number for?
Cause I think all the board members should know that before they vote on it.
I have to look at the numbers, what was redefined, what percentage increase is for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six? And looking at, looking at the increase, that we have, depending on what it is, we'll have to take a look at. I, I know for insurance rates, we're looking at about a twelve percent increase of those wages. Pizza is trying to be about the same, thirteen, fourteen, nine percent, and what it had, supposed to be here, about the same. So, uh, I just have to review the contracts that said just authorized it in four February and take a look at the numbers.
Let me, let me just clarify in comments, um, so just verify with what it is. It's just some parts, I think what we're looking for is four percent to be your one, three and a half, and three and a half.
No, I would hear that, I would, I would, that would be dollars.
I'm sorry.
Four percent, I believe that's about $760,000, just as ours.
Just as ours.
Just as ours.
Can I answer all your questions?
No, because I'm in the new salary emphasis. Benefits are over thirty percent of salary, so you're, you're looking at another $200,000 on top of that. And you still have three other contracts to file on.
Right, so I have a very challenging negotiation process. I'm gonna clarify, I just all the same question for the, for the, I was getting so annoyed by. Just like you think that I asked, we, we need to number, and I mean, sure that means it's already over, but see that in the contract conditions.
You cannot teach quality staff if you don't pay them, you can't.
Who?
You can't, it's impossible. Everywhere you go, every, there's a percentage increase of raises. Tell me somebody else who has two master's degrees that doesn't get a raise or a bonus or something. It doesn't happen, if I don't get it, I leave.
Right, and Rich, you've been here all the, all the time, so you know about the people that are, that are in the industry because
Absolutely.
You know, they're getting lateral moves and they're getting like fifteen, seventeen grand pay raises that we can't compete with. So it really becomes extremely comfortable for this, we can try to figure out a way to combat. We're also ready to use, as, as I said, quality teachers.
And a lot of, uh, a lot of emergency teaching certificates is, is disgusting. Uh, way more than the actual teaching certificates are issued. So anybody can come and have teacher kits. We want quality staff, emergency.
We want quality staff, first.
Right, so, did that help answer any of your questions? Is there a different question, yes? Okay, you have to write here. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any of your presentation, or does that, guys?
Jennifer Leonie, 111, Jennifer. Um, I just had a question.
Do you think so, like, that?
Yeah, just running out, sorry. I mean, I'm already kind of. Um, so I just had some questions over the new position for the, um, registration and community relations specialist. I just wanted to know what was happening with Rob Flowers' position, because that's the director of community relations as well. So I just was wondering if the new position, like, are we having two of those community relations? Is, is John being, it got rid of, is it being different? Um, and if so, what is that called for? Because I didn't see any information.
Sorry, you can speak much better. Oh, Rob, you have to answer my question. So, um, John, roles and responsibilities have shifted. So Mr. Flowers, uh, who currently serves at a district level, uh, for communications and outreach and a lot of that work, um, is transitioning into a primary, primary, uh, position at the middle school. Serving a different role, but similar to the team of students, where the primary is focused on supporting that building, the students in that building. Um, and then with that, he's, uh, the roof area, communication and marketing component of this job. So, um, that's something we discussed as, as a board, so he shifted into that role. Um, I still am very heavily involved in communication, marketing, business outreach. Um, but when we talk about trying to generate additional revenue, uh, because again, we're all very cognizant of the fact that two-thirds of our revenue comes from our local taxes. What we want to do is find additional revenue streams. So, uh, we'll be, notice we've had a number of conversations with, um, the later educational, oh, gosh, foundation, thank you very much. Um, and through those conversations, they're willing to move their foundation forward. Um, they, they look second, second, uh, based on their admissions. And, uh, they want to do additional work to do that. They want to bring somebody in that can help them, uh, reach out to alumni, act better with, um, local businesses. Clearly, we don't, you guys can see opportunities that are available. Um, but they're like, we can't, we can't make a full-time position. Is there any interest in the district? Do partner with us. And I said, well, you know, we're actually changing some roles and responsibilities to come a little bit meaner. Um, we do have some need in this area. Um, and there, there's a bunch of different things going around. This also impacts our HR functions as a district, and then administrative assistant functions. And that belongs, register already to, uh, we need somebody to help with this, as well as the communications and marketing piece. So it's essentially a half-time person that can help us with registration, communication, business relationship, uh, in support of what I'm doing. Um, as well as then the later education foundation to try to generate additional, uh, funds that they like to support the district with. So overall, we do believe that it's going to be an increasing revenue for the district. Um, so while it looks like they're in a position and it kind of is offset with other groups that have done it. So it's net mutual to the district, so it's, so.
So then my real question, what is happening with that position? Is that being completely voided out? Or are we keeping that and then replacing it with, like, just equity awareness, or like, is that position gone?
So Mr. Flowers' position?
Yes.
Is completely morphed into a different role?
Okay, that's what my question was. I just wanted to make sure there were two that looked very similar to each other. And that's just, so that, that headline of community relations and equity awareness is.
That, that title is on, the exact title is still TV. Uh, we're still planning on with that, uh, agreement right now, uh, but that, that title is on.
Okay, that was my real question. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think my great thing is, yeah, that is that we're able to move that just around it and just consolidation. And did not have to add to much if it did, but I have given that as zero. So that was, that was a great move, but to go over, to chug around that, stay as they, not adding to the budget. All right, moving on. Moving on to the answers, uh, there will not be executive session here, it's nice to meet you. Um, we want to set items, uh, items. Items 381, 338, 385. Uh, I'm still aware this contract is, is, is pretty old. Uh, so I believe. All right, so items 31, 338, 15. All right, here, any questions?
You know what, we, this is a special motion. I'm sorry, but you've got a non-investigation.
Oh, motion.
Motion.
Your question, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
All right. So can I get a? Question, comments? Any question, comments, we're on page 381. With the PSDA access package, are we really utilizing, um, CP that's all of those access that is in the board? Or is there something that they knocked down into a, a system or strategy? Uh, I, I don't believe that we are to bump down without losing functionality.
No.
Yeah.
I don't know if the staff, the school, lots of vendors, um, that kind of supply training, the staff can change through the ESG, ours is a tiny group.
I'm back in space, that's fine. 35. Any other question? Any other questions, or any other? All right, so can I get a third, one, 381, 338.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Grash?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Thank you, so right. All right, for personal, the second items. Items 381, 348, 3. Can I get a motion for those?
How much?
And second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, can we put on, like, 381, 338? Um, may I have votes?
Mr. Grash?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you, so right. We already have item five, or something, treasure. Uh, can I get a motion for item 51? And a second?
Motion.
Second, I feel like.
Yep.
Uh, can I get either, oh, I'm sorry, any questions? Anybody have anything that, uh? There you go, Mrs. Beckman.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Grash?
Yes.
Last one, so.
All right, moving on to finding exact set items. Items 681, 6811.
How to separate, how to.
Right, so we're, uh, I have the motion, I think, to remove item 683.
Oh. We're wanting, uh, we could just approve item 68.
One, two, and then four.
We're all on work for, get away with it.
So all the bottom three. Okay, so can I get a motion to vote on 681 for 11 minus 683?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll say it.
All right, can I get a vote?
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
I'm mute.
Mr. Scott?
Bob.
Come back to it. Oh, sorry, sorry, I was on mute, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Grash?
Bell.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Okay, that's the second one.
All right, so now we will vote on item 683. Right, can I get a vote?
I need to have the same.
Ready, Mr. Bell, say it twice.
I have the same, the same.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions, yes. Can I get a vote, Mr. Bell?
What do we, launch it? Not for this one?
Oh, sorry. Right, a motion.
Motion.
All right, and second?
Sorry.
May I have a vote?
Now we may have a vote.
Right, just all right.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Mrs. Bell, never mind.
Um, Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Grash?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Don't you, access seven, one, two.
Moving on to program set items. I have 71 for set two. Can I get a motion for those items? Can I get a question?
I think.
Any questions for the board on item 71, set two? All right, are you done? Can I get a vote, Mr. Bell?
I'll just have a second.
Uh. Mrs. Thompson, uh, Mrs. Markle.
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright, yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Grash?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Access eight zero.
Thank you, so right. Moving on to personalized set items. And it's 81, 884. I have a motion for those. I'm going to have a question for you.
Okay.
Where can I get a motion for that, son?
But if you, if you want to, uh, remove part of the, the language. If you wanted to, what's the motion is made to for all levels? If you want to take a, remove that motion, yes, that.
It's more of a question motion.
Uh.
If you haven't seen the contract, or, or.
That's right, you know.
Which is question. Okay, all right. So will you give a motion for that?
I motion.
I ask that, okay, Mrs. Thompson. And any questions, Tom?
Yes, what, why are we voting on a collective bargaining agreement, and seeing that? As a board, 1,000, 1,41, and summary?
So, said, can you give your question?
How are we voting on the collective bargaining agreement, who we have not seen the collective bargaining agreement?
Okay, so how is that one? So that was, that moved. So, you can use 12 points to create, when you refer to this, uh, this, we can update this before we say that. So did you, did you?
I did, but we haven't seen the actual collective bargaining support.
Okay, so what, so, so he's, he's asked me. So you haven't done, you haven't done that. So I think we must discuss it with Mr. President. That's what we're trying to. So we are going to go into the executive session.